A mechanism for defining what is the capacity of that property's development. We haven't had any contact with the proposed interested land buyer, so, and we're not proposing necessarily to have to do that, but I brought copies of what we're trying to do, which is mirroring what we did in the B1 district, which was to create a layout and then a chart. And the chart identifies what's developable. So, we've contacted the planning board's consultant who has most of the graphic information, and we were hoping to go to the planning board on the 22nd and get their agreement to let us propose this marketing package similar to what we did for the B1 district, which has gone to a variety of development programs, the last of which was to the mass housing and economic, or community development, for their understanding of what the development capacity of that location was. And we were-
Which incidentally got them annoyed at us about our bedroom limits and landed us in hot water with the Attorney General.
Everything can be corrected.
That's right.
But, in any event, we, as I say, on the 22nd, we're hoping to go forward with that, and we didn't know whether or not there is any reason to be trying to make contact with the Hoboken folks and let them know what we're doing ahead of doing it or not. Again, therefore, reaching out to you folks for advice and guidance on how to go forward, if to go forward.
So you're, so Bob, I'm sorry, so this is just for the Southwood property then?
No, we're trying to promote the C1 district.
Oh, C1, okay, sorry.
And we're focused on that because of the new medical office building-
Sure.
-complex, which is going to arrive in the spring of next year in full force and probably even have an expanded property right next to it growing, which means that we think there's the opportunity for more interest-
Sure.
...in that area. And one of the properties that's within a quarter mile of that is the Southwood property.
Okay.
And so, once again, we thought in making a marketing package out there, we should identify all of the available properties and what they could in fact provide in the way of opportunity for future development. And we did do a study in 2010, which identified the Southwood property as having a commercial development capability of approximately 600,000 square feet. We did identify with research studies by engineers what the sewer capacity of the property is, how it would be located, and that there needs to be remediation of the landfill. All that data exists and is, you know, part of information that we can figure out to use or not use.
Let's think this through a little bit, Bob.
Yep.
I mean, C1 district, absolutely. Great thing to do, go for it. I mean, we've got a lot of activity down there. That encourages new activity, perfect timing. I'm not quite as, as gung ho on the Southwood piece, for a couple of reasons. We don't, first, we don't really know what's going on there. We do know there is a proposed buyer for the land. We've been told a couple of times that he's about ready to execute the deal. I don't know whether he has or he hasn't. I don't think we know, one way or the other.
I don't think the purchase and sale signed, no.
Yeah, it is-
It's not signed.
Okay, so, I, I'm not sure whether, and this is a question more than a statement, I'm not sure whether it serves our best interest to promote that independently at this time when we know that there is an active set of circumstances going on there. Because if that purchase and sale does go through, there's a lot of conversation that has to take place.
Yep.
And we want that conversation to be as positive and receptive as we can possibly make it. And I'm not sure that, that promoting this independently, or independent of that case creates the right scenario.
Well, again, that's why we're here tonight was-
Just, it's a question.
Yeah.
It, it just wrestle with that.
And so, we, we're going to get the promotional documents ready to use, and the question is, do we or don't we use them? And that's why we're asking you-
Yeah.
...to feed in on that. We're going to be meeting with the planning board in two weeks or so, I think, on the 22nd. And so, again, nothing's been committed, we're just now, I wanted everyone to know that we have the research and database to do as much as we want to do if we see that as a positive thing to do.
My gut tells me that I would hold off on Southwood.
Scott?
Yeah, no, I'd say, just because of what's going on there, I'd keep it in your back pocket. Since you have it ready to go, you can fire it off, and we can re, you know, if this, if we're not happy with the penis taking too long, or it falls through, we now know we have this, and I would just, then I would go full bore, you know?
Because there is a property right on the corner of Valley Street and Dedham Street, 1A, that would be ideal development potential.
Agreed.
Which side? The Southwood side or the other side?
The other side. And I just wanted to, you know, refresh the selectmen's memory of what we did in 2010 and the database that we have, so that you can all sort of see where the chips are to be played.
I remember, yeah.
So are you sending this off to development companies as well?
Well, we have done that with the B1 district model. So that's why I'm just saying that, yes, we do reach out and try and promote, but that's why I'm saying at this point in time, we can limit it to just the C1 and let everybody ask, so what's in the C6, or we could make it a dual effort, and that's the question.
I mean-
But our focus was, as an economic development committee, even with no other in, was to promote it for its commercial development capability.
Mm-hmm. Just, you, you have a party engaged in purchase discussions of that property. To what extent, we're unclear, but-
Right.
Unless something's changed, they're engaged. If, if it's changed, then they're no longer engaged, absolutely.
I mean, I can, it's, it's a little bit of a question. I mean, and we've been working with the current owners of Southwood and to, on the cleanup, you know, on the security issues. And they're very, you know, they're including us on emails that they're very engaged with Mr. Vallone, who's the purchaser, because he's funding some of that cleanup. So even though they haven't entered a purchase and sale yet, he's-
He's in there.
He's got some skin in the game, he's more confident.
I don't think he's putting any big money in.
To me, all the more reason, I just don't see any upside to doing that right now, Bob.
Okay.
Just my opinion. You're obviously pensive about this.
Well, I'm just weighing it. I mean, on the one hand, you're going to be emphasizing commercial development-
That's right.
...which is more advantageous to the town than residential development. So, insofar as, you know, Mr. Vallone is buying it, he might, maybe he decides it's better for him to put up commercial anyway. Or he gets approached by somebody who says, "I understand you, I went to the Archdiocese to try to buy this thing, I understand you have it. Let me talk about what we got here. We got $600,000 R&amp;D, 600,000 square feet of R&amp;D space." So that's like, you know, and then there are parcels all over C1 that are under agreement and not, and open and not, so I'm not that troubled by advertising something that may be under agreement somewhere. You know, it's still, we're just telling the facts, ma'am, this is the underlying zoning. But I can see the point. I, it may be viewed as ill faith with Mr. Vallone.
Well, it, it's a little different than the C1 district, in that, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that that's a, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that's a fair comparison. You're in a very different set of circumstances. Now knowing that he's investing some of his own money in this cleanup project, I mean, he's not doing that out of goodwill, I suspect. It'd be great if he is. If he is, we-
He's got some skin in the game now?
It would appear, yeah.
I mean, they haven't, he hasn't spent-
I think we're talking, there's a commitment, there hasn't been anything done yet.
Right.
Right. But, but the, the point is, is that-
Pause of chat.
Your points are, are very valid, you know, there may be a lot of ways that we could have discussions, or many folks could have discussions with him about alternatives. The question is, under what circumstances and when do you do that?
I can just-
And, and I just, I just not sure that, that, I, I'm struggling seeing any upside, and I can see potential downside.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, everything we do has downstream implications. So when I'm looking downstream, if I don't, if I'm struggling finding a plus sign to this, and I can see some potential downsides to this, my gut tells me not to do it.
And our good friends at DHC do look at this and say, "What do you mean, you got a one-property zone when you're zoning? That sounds like spot zoning." And then we go back to the Attorney General. So, yeah, I can see cutting off C6. I could also see cutting off C1C.
Why?
Because, because that's zoned for only naughty things.
Oh.
Do you want to start attracting them?
No, they'd have to build it on stilts.
Mostly joking, Bob, you can, you know. So I think for the C1, it would be a really nice package to put together, to get out.
Well, as I say, that's why we're here tonight, was just to get all our options on the table and not proceed without some direction.
You're going to throw in, you know, I know you're going to have a minor key over here, a minor map over here showing Patriot Place, but like, you know, one and a half miles from Route 1, 15 miles from 95, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would have made a lovely parking area for the casino, being facetious.
Gambling addiction rehab.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
That's the kind of information we wanted before we moved to the next level, so.
Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity for input, thanks.
Just to make sure that we don't forget that we did have a 43D grant, and we did define what could happen there, there are all things being-
Well, that, that all may be very well useful at some point in that conversation, as Rob suggests. There might be a, I suspect that we might have an opportunity for that conversation.
I wanted you to know the database is there and what it amounts to, and how it was determined and so forth. And as I say, it was, it was a good research study, and we got a lot of good information. We did our traffic studies, we did our hydrogeology, we did all of that, and we did the density-capacity analysis. So all of that information could be of value at some point in time to somebody.
Would love to see it when it's, when it's going out.
Yeah, thank you, thanks. And as always, thank you for your hard work.
Okay.
Before you leave, just, I thought I'd mention to all of you, was Rob Anderson, I don't know if you've had, he's from the new, he's the new regional director for Metro West of the Massachusetts Office of Business Development. He's coming to just swing by on Thursday. He said he went through Norfolk, and it was the first time he'd ever been to Norfolk. So he thought he'd-
What time on Thursday?
10:00 AM.
Uh-huh.
I mean, it's not, there's no agenda. He just wanted to come in, and he's trying to meet all the towns, but if anybody, you know-
Okay.
You guys certainly can add a lot to the conversation.
Sure.
Anybody is interested in joining me, we'll be there. He said he is talking, he didn't tell me what, but he's talking to a company in Norfolk that is thinking of expanding, so.
Good.
We'll talk about that when we answer.
Somebody from economic development will try and join you.
Okay.
Very good.
Just, just because I know you have a vested interest in this, we have touched base with Stop and Shop, we have connected.
Okay.
We actually had a meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 10 o'clock. The appropriate Stop and Shop folks apparently have had a conflict, but they are receptive to having a meeting with the necessary people. So we're, we're probably going to get pushed back till the first week in November, somewhere in that range, when we can get all the parties, but they have been receptive to meeting with us.
Good, good. Thanks, Bob.
Some movement.
Yeah, well, they've met with us before, so you just keep that in mind. But it has-
Yep.
We haven't gotten Nicole's shoulder, that's, that's a good thing.
That was in 2010, oh.
Yeah. Thanks again, guys. Thank you. Lori, nice to see you.
Nice.
So, and again, I apologize to anyone watching who has been confused by our technical difficulties this morning, this evening.
Is it working now?
I believe it is up and running, so, 10 minutes ago or so.
We have completed our, the visit portion of our agenda.
We discussed all that this morning, didn't we?
Now on to the town administrator report. I got to get a gavel before this is all over.
I got one upstairs, boy.
Yeah, he has it for you. I think he's whacking it in the head.
Be careful for what you ask.
So the first action item, consider supporting the Community Innovation Challenge Grant proposed through SURGE. Trying to remember what was in there.
We're not in SURGE.
We are in SURGE, yes, we are.
We are? We're in, we're in MAPC.
I'll get it back, because that was in the-
Oh, I'm thinking of SERPET, I'm sorry.
The stuff that I stole from Jim, I got to get back, because it was in a packet. So, yeah, we are in SURGE. SURGE is the Southeast Regional, Regional Group.
Yeah, I was thinking of SERPET, the planning agency.
And they are, William, Bill Ross, who's the town manager of Mansfield, is putting together a project, and it's, they're asking other towns to consider it, and certainly sounds like a good idea off the, off the, at 10,000 feet, anyway. So I'll just read a couple of the blurbs they put together. Regionalizing municipal, so they're looking to apply for a Community Innovation Challenge Grant, is where we're going with this. Regionalizing municipal stormwater management in southeastern Massachusetts through collaborative education, data management, and policy development. And it says, whereas the town of Norfolk has committed to, and every, 18 other towns would do this as well, but whereas the town of Norfolk has committed to fostering regional approaches to solving governmental problems and delivering services more effectively and efficiently by entering into an interminiscile agreement with other, 18 other communities to form the southeastern regional services group, and whereas it has been determined that it is in the town's best interest to craft a regional approach to stormwater management to both meet EPA requirements and protect local watersheds. Now therefore may it be resolved that Board of Selectmen, as follows, that the town of Norfolk and the, oh, the town of Mansfield, sorry, and their Southeast Regional Services Group are hereby authorized on behalf of the applicant to file applications and execute agreements. The town administrator is duly authorized to sign the Community Innovation Challenge Grant application on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and then if said award is made, the town agrees to make a representative to participate in the project steering committee. The representative would be expected to attend periodic meetings to offer their municipalities' local input on the grant program. And I bring this to you, but with one bit of hesitation, is that we may be ahead of most, a lot of these communities, because we did so much work on stormwater, kind of at the end of Butcher's tenure. So I need to talk to Bill about that. So, we don't need to, we still have time to do this at the 22nd, but I thought it was interesting that SURGE, SURGE has gotten together to work on this.
What a regional approach to stormwater management be. We don't want to pump it, we don't want to put a bash in the ground.
I think it's really just, I think it's creating the bylaws is my, is my, in the rules.
It's a lot of people together to try to get census and bylaws in, right? I mean, I don't know, like you said-
Not every, not every community has the same considerations. I don't know how you could get one uniform-
But the problem is, I mean, you know, that's something Bob and I, Bob McGee and I are trying to, you know, continually stay educated on, but that's something, stormwater's going to become more and more of an issue over the next few years, it's-
But as you said, we're way ahead because of our Charles River, you know, they took the Charles River towns early. We're way ahead of the rest of these guys on this stuff.
Well, it doesn't hurt to stay close to it.
So I'll talk to Bill and get some more information about, you know, what they're really thinking, and, you know, I suspect it, it probably won't, you know, it's not going to cost us anything, other than some time participating. They're going to get a grant for, to hire an engineer to help, you know, a consultant to put together some bylaws, and-
Maybe we could take some additional bylaws, and if we need it, maybe we get some help that way, if he, you know, if he gives ideas. One way to look at it, right, if they, you know, the grant pays for that.
Did you say charter, what?
That, but if-
So we will, unless you want to, we won't take any action on that tonight. And please vote to approve the joint salt bid with the town of Medfield, and award the bid to Eastern Minerals Incorporated, $47.20 a ton, and an alternate bid to International Salt Company at $47.78 per ton.
So moved.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded, and is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who no. The ayes have it.
We actually need some, I didn't bring that last email, I apologize. We need two registrars. There we go, nice.
But we're going to do them for different terms, so that they are staggered, correct?
Jerry St. Ammon, and, why would they be staggered?
I thought, I thought this was, I thought this was screwed up somehow. How many registrars do we have, Marion?
Three, supposedly.
Shouldn't it be one a year? It's a three-year appointment.
I think at some point, I think somebody, because one of them-
Remember, we got into a big fight with the town clerk about this two years ago, and our solution was, we'll go forth and send no more. We'll fix it. We won't kick out people who are in office.
Can double check.
Well, the, part of the issue we have with the town clerk wasn't dates as much as the process.
It was the people.
Yeah.
And he said, "This guy shouldn't be here, because this person's already, blah, 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 he should be out." And we had, we went to town council-
Okay, I can recheck it in the morning.
And we do need a Republican. I mean, the incumbent is, I think he'll do it in a pinch, but if there were another person, that would probably be ideal, since I got from my discussion with the incumbent.
Was there another person?
No, the Republican town committee has not brought forward a name.
No, so we can pick anybody.
That's willing to do it.
Where's the, where's the census? Town list.
It has to be somebody who's not-
On anything else.
Yeah, so that's, that kind of limits here.
Well, you, you have someone that's willing to do it.
Yeah.
And has done it, isn't experienced.
Yep.
And that could be important, if all things take due course here. So-
I'm just, the term issue is-
Well, why don't we, why, I will make a motion to appoint Jerry St. Ammon as the Republican member as Board of Registrars, term to be determined.
We can't do that. I think we've tried to do that before in something else.
Hmm?
Yeah, we probably should pick a term.
Well, what, what-
I'll go up and check it.
All right, then we'll hold off.
Marion, we're going to hold off, we're going to pop this to the 22nd.
Okay.
We're not going to do this tonight, unless-
I'm not opposed to that, let's get it right.
Yeah, let's just get it right, I don't want to-
Confirm it, the person wants to do it, too.
I should have done some homework today. Consider the status of the fall town meeting.
Consider the status of the fall town meeting. So in your absence, Mr. Chairman, we had a discussion about the potential of-
Not having a fall town meeting.
Not having a fall town meeting, because many of the warrant articles-
Are mundane.
Are mundane, and there's no zoning articles for which the purpose of fall town meeting-
Was purposed.
Was purposed. There has been a, you saw, you see, I handed out tonight, there's been a letter from the school committee chairman and superintendent, I guess an email version of that, saying that they were planning on coming to the fall town meeting, and they had given me a heads-up on this probably over a month ago, they were going to come looking for some money, both on capital and in budget. So I guess we need, you know, well, we need to decide the whole question, but, and then, and then if we decide not to have it, do we, do we, you know, we could cover part of this with a advisory board transfer, and then transfer the rest in the spring. I talked to Sean about it, chairman of the school committee, and he's, he's concerned that if we don't have it in the fall, that, you know, they end up kind of rolling the dice and ended up waiting until spring, that if the school, if the town votes, votes a transfer down, then they're, they're, they would be stuck. I said that's, that is a challenge.
I'm also troubled by the idea of having a town body do a burn rate that isn't approved by town meeting. You know, so if you let them just go through the burn rate with the idea, oh yeah, we'll fix it with a transfer, I mean, that's not what town meeting approved, that's not what their budget was. This gives town meeting a chance to give them the budget they need.
You mean in fall, in the fall time meeting?
Yeah.
Well, let's just take this issue off the table for a second. The only other issue that we had that had any element of pressing considerations was the CPC article, which is now no longer a pressing consideration. So aside from this, there's really nothing in town meeting to need that would justify holding, on the warrant, that would justify holding town meeting, spending four, three, four, whatever it is, for the 18 people that will show up. There's really nothing there. The only article, I mean, I think the constable article is not critical. It's a fix if we want to fix it, but it's not critical to the May election, because all you're doing is voting to stagger the dates. But that's an opinion, you know, I mean, it's not critical. I think it's a good thing to do, I'm not suggesting that, but it's not critical. The Audubon, no longer critical, can wait to the May. The $200,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust can wait. So there's no other article on there. I was aware of this, but this is the first time I've seen the letter. This is concerning to me.
Well, we knew they had significant capital needs.
We knew they had at least two.
Yep.
Okay, we didn't know they had four. I didn't know they had four. I knew they had two. We, we knew about the sprinkler system, because they pulled that out of the budget. But that said, you know, right now, we have 228, $223,000 of available capital funding. And we've probably got about a $700,000 request.
We also have significant free cash that's-
We do.
Typically spent on capital.
We do.
And we have been starving the town on capital.
I'm not arguing. You, you going to let me finish where I'm going?
Sure.
Okay. We have, I'll, I'll refrain. Your turn.
Scott?
What are you asking, whether we just, yeah, is it pressing?
Taking the chairman's prerogative.
Yeah, are you going last, and that, you know, I mean, other than, other than the, you know, what schools asked about, I mean, the rest of it is not pressing, and we're not in favor of, you know, spending $4,000 for a few people in articles that can wait. I guess it's now comes back to, you know, what to do. I know you like government all the time, but I mean, if we don't get more than 10, you know, 100 people there, it doesn't, it's not really effective anyways.
Jack, do any of these capital projects need to be started before May? I mean, aren't most of these summer work?
Yeah, I mean, most, most-
A new hot water heater?
Well, they need it, they've been living-
With a hot water heater that the police chief has actually made, the fire chief has actually made the company swear and attest that it won't blow up. I mean, if you, if we asked our fire chief, he would say they need a hot water heater yesterday. Now, they've said it won't blow up, they, you know, it's, it's, it's going to survive, but-
Yeah, I mean, it's, the, you know, the school was fine with the condition of the hot water until the building commissioner and the fire chief started raising questions.
Yeah, so we kind of raised tech on this.
But that's their job. I, I don't challenge that, that's their job. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
We have a capital outlay committee, and they should go through the process for capital expenditures. We're now a month away from the proposed town meeting. If one of these, if the hot water heater is of a critical nature, then by all means, you know, we don't want anybody at risk or endangering any consideration. If the other items aren't going to be items that can be fixed until after the full, spring town meeting, then I would recommend they wait till the spring town meeting. I agree we have expenditures that have to be met, but I don't want to push them through in three weeks. And, and I think we have an obligation- And I think we have an obligation to do it right. And if there's a critical component here, we'll hold town meeting. Or I would support holding town meeting. Or let me put it another way. I wouldn't support canceling town meeting because we've already got it. And do what we have to do to make sure that we operate correctly.
Actually, we don't because we haven't signed any of the warrants, so...
No, we haven't.
Maybe it doesn't exist yet.
But I don't want to push through $100,000 of capital requests without going through the right process and having people have the opportunity, the very committee that we formed to do this. And plus, we might get more money. And yes, we have free cash that can easily go to capital. I'm not suggesting we can't meet the demand, but the demand will exceed both our free cash and our capital if we allow it.
We have a list of 200-some-odd thousand dollars worth of stuff that we had already approved. So it's already been viewed as a need. Some of it's public safety stuff, some of it's routine maintenance that we haven't done in years and need to do.
And most of these aren't on that list.
These aren't on this list.
Correct.
That list. The fire suppression system, we took out of their budget last year with the agreement that we would put it back should money become available. The TACIT agreement. We offered to revisit.
I'm not arguing the validity of their requests. That's not my point. But I would also argue the validity of all of the other requests that are on that sheet. And that 228,000 was whittled down from a much larger list. And it was whittled to 228,000 because that's all the money we have. So I just want there to be the appropriate process. So I guess, Jack, my perspective, I would say, look, if the hot water heater is putting anything at risk, let's get it done. If the others are issues that we should go through the due process and fix as part of our capital allotment for knowing whatever money, and we'll know better in May as to what we want to allocate for capital than what we know now. If you're gonna put $100,000 into the budget, and you're gonna put $100,000 into capital, you don't have $500,000 of free cash anymore. And your favorite budget item, snow and ice. Farmers Almond Act says we're gonna have a terrible winter. Of course, they haven't been right for six years, so the odds are we won't have any snow. But just because it's in the bank doesn't mean we go write the check when we have seven, eight, almost nine months' worth of operational considerations still to work hard with.
To be frank, I'm interested in making sure this money goes to durable goods rather than sitting around and gets appropriated next fall, next spring into some repeating operational thing that we decide we can pay for because we got all this money. You know, I would like to get this money in a place where it can't be spent on bloating the budget next spring.
Well, you're implying we were gonna bloat the budget next spring?
I'm implying that if there's a pool of money sitting around in the spring, and we have an operating budget debate over whether or not we give, you know, X department 1.1 or 1.16 or 2.1.35, and Y department 7.2 million or 7.8 or 7.9, that having that bloat of money makes it really easy to say, "Okay, woo-hoo, we gotta, you guys, don't worry about the parsing. You've got the cash." Meanwhile, this isn't repeating cash. This is free cash. We have an obscenely, to my view, large amount of free cash right now. I would like to put it away. And it can be either put away in durable goods that will serve our needs, and we've got a long list of them, from things the fire department wants to things DPW needs, and also sticking it in the bank.
Alright, so let's go with your strategy, which I don't think anybody would logically disagree with. Why wouldn't you want to go through the due process and have all of the capital needs duly evaluated and recommended?
Because we have a list of 200,000-plus-odd capital items that are already...
From a list of over 700,000 that was submitted.
So, yeah, we've already whittled them.
And we've whittled out 68,000 of that 228,000 already.
I think we've got a good list. You've gotta make a list now that...
I think the capital outlay committee needs to make that decision. That list is a year old.
I know there's stuff that we buy every year, like police cars. So if we don't buy police cars in this fall, right?
I think just you and I are gonna agree to disagree, and Mr. Bugby's gonna cast the deciding vote. I want the process, I want us to follow the process. To do that in a short-circuited component because we've got some money sitting around in the bank and we want to spend it on durable goods is not a good financial decision, in my opinion. And to imply that we're gonna take this money and bloat it into reoccurring expenses from one-time revenues, you know better.
We've done it before.
Every board has done it, well, at necessity, when times have been tough. And when you have budget cuts and you have state aid reduced, you have to make some very difficult decisions. But somehow we've come through those six years with a surplus in each one of those instances. So I think we've done a pretty good job of managing those expenses and with our revenues. Okay, so I think we've passed the litmus test on that one.
We've had fall town meetings to appropriately...
We agree to disagree. It's in your hands.
Well, no, I guess I'm a little bit confused. I know, I hear what you want to, he wants to take an outdated, one-year-old list, re-up it. Look at these things.
Which one of us are you asking?
That's Rob.
Well, no, but you think the list, it's Rob's point, we have a list already determined by the capital where they'd spend 228,000, some money. But you want that, because it's a year old, you want them to have time to update it.
Well, let me put it this way. These weren't on that list.
Right.
Okay? They weren't on the list.
But who says, but you're saying, I don't get it.
What else is not on that list?
But if we go to town meeting, these might not be what...
There's a lot of things.
That's my point. It is that that list is not sacred. These, this is $100,000 that was not on that list of 228,000. I'm not arguing with you, Scott. I'm just trying to point it out. This is $100,000 of expenditures that was not on that list of 228,000 that we recommended. Wasn't there.
Right, so it won't get a vote on in fall town meeting?
Well, but the point is, is that we're saying one of these items is critical to do that.
Okay.
So all I'm saying is, what else isn't on this list? We don't know. Every time, when you have a list that's a year old, things change. New things, you know, things break. We have new needs. We don't know what that list is. And before we go spending what we have, we need to get that list. And we can't get that list and have it properly evaluated by November 19th. We can't do it. And that's all I'm trying to say. I'm not arguing the merits of the list. I'm not arguing the merits of the 228,000. I don't, I think we'd all agree those are definite needs.
But you're thinking it might be more definite or more...
Well, there are more.
There are more. But you only spend a portion of spending money. If it's 228...
If we have something that's critical...
We would know about it, right? Wouldn't we already know?
Well, we're being told the hot wa, let's just take it for granted. Let's just, let's be devil's advocate here and say that, okay, on this list, hot water is critical. Okay. Then, you know, we hold fall town meeting. We ask the town to approve the paying for that. But to go beyond that, if the need isn't critical, when we haven't had the opportunity to go back and comply, or to go back and complete, I should say, a complete inventory of our needs so that we can sit down and properly prioritize those needs, when we know there's more than what's on that list now, in my opinion, is not the right thing to do. I'm just saying we need to wait till the spring to do that. I'm not saying, "Don't spend the 35,000 if that's critical for the hot water heater."
Don't spend it now or don't spend it until the spring, you mean?
If that's something that puts anything at risk between now and May, we need to fix it. In my opinion. Anything. I mean, fire trucks ready to blow up. I mean, anything that puts people at risk or, I mean, if that, they don't have hot water, they don't have school. So that's something we have to weigh. All I'm suggesting is, is that we don't have, in my opinion, we do not have a current accurate list or knowledge of what our overall capital needs are. I completely agree with Rob. We need to dedicate these resources to those kinds of projects. Completely agree. I'm just saying we don't have that list. That's my point. So I guess I'm saying we probably should hold, I mean, I didn't know about this, I didn't see this letter till today. If that in fact is a critical need, then we need to hold town meeting and fix it. And if we're gonna do that, we might as well go through with the other articles that are there and get it all done. That's okay.
We have known about the 100 grand for at least two months.
I've known about the 100 grand for the budget. I have not known about the capital needs.
Yeah, so we've known about the budget needs since beginning of September.
I'm talking capital. I agree with you. We've known about the issue with the kindergarten for a while. And it's, you know, it's not their fault.
So we've also known, you know, about the significant amount of capital we'll have coming to us.
I agree.
Since early September. So this is bad on us, apparently, because we didn't activate the capital outlay committee.
Fine, you know, bad on us then. I mean, our fault. I'm not looking for fault. I'm looking to be sure we do it right. Put it all on us, that's fine.
No.
That's okay. No, I don't think that's sarcastically.
And you don't, no.
He's right.
We don't always do it right anyway. I mean, he might not always, you know...
He's right, because we've been waffling on the town, on the town warrant and basic, or the town, whether or not we're gonna hold town meeting, we've been waffled, waffling on it. Rod's absolutely right. We haven't really gone forward with the vigor that we should anticipating a fall town meeting, because quite frankly, at least, I think in my mind anyway, I didn't think we were actually gonna end up holding it.
The water department funding can't be accessed without a town meeting vote either. Right? They've got some 600,000 bucks.
Correct.
So they're gonna, they need a town meeting vote to do the necessary and proper stuff with that, too.
Yes.
So they'll be held up till spring as well.
If they're looking to spend that money.
Yeah.
But they have 75,000 or 100,000 in there.
They've got money appropriated as it is that they haven't spent. And I haven't heard from Bob McGee that he wants to spend that 600,000 between now and spring. I mean, am I wrong?
No, but...
Yeah, we've got line items in the budget for special projects, which would include the water exploration.
I would recommend that we go forward with the fall town meeting to work out what appears to be a critical need for the hot water tank. I would recommend that the other capital projects, unless there's something I don't know, you know, just that we defer those to the spring town meeting and we get the capital outlay committee operating early spring to reevaluate all of the considerations that are gonna be before them, and that we get a current list of our needs. Just included.
We should, should we get the current list as soon as possible and get them working as soon as, are you afraid it gets old? I mean, I don't ask too much of the folks.
We have, certainly, we have a list of capital needs. You know, there's, you know, the only ones that I know of that have been added to the list that we have, that's already been evaluated by the capital committee. And again, I would want both the department heads and the capital committee to reevaluate both lists. The new things to the list are things from the DPW, some lawn care equipment, because they wanna...
Take over the mowing.
Yeah, they wanna take over the mowing. That's it. Otherwise, it's, you know, we're talking the same old things, vehicles and building maintenance.
Did we buy the cars last fall or last? Did we buy any cars this spring?
We bought two cars from the last meeting. You told me about it, please?
Yeah. We bought them last fall.
It was last fall.
We appropriated them last fall. So Chuck falls a year behind. If we wait till spring, six months behind.
I don't think that's correct.
When did we do capital? The spring or the fall?
I think he was up for the spring.
He got delivered in probably June, so I'm surprised, I wouldn't think he got...
You may be right.
Yeah, because I thought I looked it up when I went back to early, in early September, when we knew about the, you know, the free cash certification. I thought I looked that up. And it was a fall town meeting issue.
Do we know about our November payment for prison mitigation?
No. No.
So we don't know whether we're gonna get anything in the end of November?
We're supposed to.
Well, we don't know.
No.
It's still in the budget, though?
Yes. Has not, there's been, haven't been any cuts yet.
But we won't know that till the end of December, uh, November, right? Early December. Doesn't that check usually come early December?
It's late December.
Late December, okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, what is your pleasure?
Well, I think we need to get some things done. I'm also conscious of keeping May to a reasonable size.
You're not gonna let any zoning articles come into May then, are you? Not gonna let any zoning articles come into May then, are you?
So what does that mean? Well, do we agree, let's see if we can sort of piece our way to a solution. I think we're in agreement that we have a critical need for the schools. And you're 100% right. We should not allow any department knowingly to spend in excess of their appropriation on the bet that the town will fund that deficit. That's poor fiscal management. And they're 100% right to bring it to our attention now. And having read that letter, they've approached it, in my opinion, in the fiscally responsible way. They're saying, "Look, if you don't think we can get this money now, then we're gonna make the cuts necessary to ensure we come within our operational budgets." That is, they're being very responsible in the way they're approaching it. You were gonna say?
No.
Sorry. So I think we have to hold a fall town meeting to deal with this. Because that's a voter decision, not ours. So I guess I would start by saying we should hold a fall town meeting.
Agreed.
Are we all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Alright, so we got a good start. We're working our way through this.
Unless you want to consider transferring money from the reserve fund.
But they've only got 50 grand in the reserve fund.
Yeah, be the whole thing and it wouldn't...
It wouldn't cover it all, too. I mean, it's a nice idea, but it's still 50 short and then they can't do anything else from the reserve.
You're filling half the gap. And you're depleting the reserves for anything else that might happen.
Which you can fix in May. I mean, I'm just throwing out an option.
I know, I know, but, but... I mean, why would we make that decision just to have a free night?
Well, there's a whole lot of work that goes into that free night.
I understand, but ensuring the financial stability of an operational budget is a worthy cause.
Yeah, there's a philosophical issue here. It goes beyond the 100K. I mean, the town needs to say, "Yes, we support this level of funding for the school. It's not what we voted at spring, but you're right, this is what they need." Because this builds on their base and it becomes what they start with next year. And like it or not, we're still a town meeting form of government. So...
Okay, I was just pointing out the fact that there's a financial way of solving the problem, where there's another solution to solving the financial issue. I agree with the philosophical.
Talk that through. So if we gave them... Let's just take the hot water tank off the table for a second. If we, I think we have, is it 40 or 50 grand in the...
I believe it's 50. I'll tell you in a second.
It might be 40, because I thought we reduced it.
I think it got pumped back up again.
Did it get pumped back up?
It's 50 grand.
Alright, so if, and we've spent nothing.
We've spent nothing.
So let's say we spent 40. Because you don't want to, you don't want to deplete the only source of available transfer of funds without a town meeting to a zero balance. So you gave them 40. So there... Is that 100,000, a run rate 100,000? Or is it, is it a this point forward 100,000? I'm assuming it's a run rate.
I think it's for the whole current budget shortfall, so that's their projected annual budget.
So, alright. It wasn't clear to me what they were saying.
Yeah.
Because 100,000 from this point forward is not 100,000 run rate. So we would be telling them in good faith that the town hopefully would be supportive of fixing what would be a 50 to 60,000 dollar hole. And we could do it through transfer in the spring town meeting. Do it from free cash. We've had to do that in the past, sometimes. We've had to do it in the fire department. Usually those transfers come from other sources of revenue other than free cash, but we have used occasionally free cash in small amounts to fix that. But to the best of my recollection, every one of those was an unanticipated overage. They weren't, we didn't know it. I mean, things happen, especially when you get to fire and police where, you know, it's, you never know. I mean, part of it was due to that condo incident we had one year and, you know, we're just, they're unavoidable. You have to deal with them. The person that was lost over in Millis, you just have to deal with those things. And they create financial issues for us because they're never budgeted for, you know, those one-time events. This one's a little different to me, because we know it. And so in good conscience, I struggle with, I think we need to fix it as best we can. Give the voters an opportunity to fix it. And not knowingly go forward with an operational deficit that we're aware of three months into the year. I just think we're doing a disservice if we do that.
And that would be a transfers, which we've already got a placeholder for transfers.
We do.
So that's, you know, we're not talking about reopening the warrant.
No, correct.
We've got the Seven Sagamore Road issue, which has to be solved via town meeting, and we... and we told them we'd solve it. Uh, there's, I know Historic Commission has two or three articles in, little work that they wanna get done. I mean, we might as well just get it out of the hole.
Well, if, if we're gonna hold it, we do everything that's.
I mean, there is a reason to have town meeting.
I mean, I, I don't think those are the reasons, but, you know, I mean, when.
I think Sagamore, frankly, the Sagamore thing is. We told them we would.
I think they got closed. I think they were able to move on.
Their, their issue is resolved.
I know their issue's resolved.
But we're, we're, I'm not as concerned about that. I see.
Fixing that in May or fixing that in November is, is not a reason to spend four thousand dollars. I, I don't, I don't see that one at all.
If it's fixed, and I think it is fixed. Yeah, yeah, they live in the house, they're happy.
If it isn't, they moved in illegally. I mean, you know, it's fixed.
And isn't there a taking we have to do?
Yeah, but it's small. Yeah.
But it's still, you know, there are things.
You already said we wanna do it, so we're gonna put all those things back on there anyways. Right? My husband and Jack's not really busy and more work.
Yeah, I thought we were past that. We were agreement. We were gonna hold it. We were gonna take those off. We hadn't gotten to that discussion yet. I'm gonna hold my.
So where do you wanna get the hundred thousand dollars from, just out of curiosity? I put my financial hat on. My.
We have seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
I didn't think you wanted to use one-time cash to support a operating budget.
Ah, except, except five hundred thousand of that is free cash, which is.
You just took the word out of my mouth.
Operating budget money, which is plowed back, wasn't used.
Yeah, but it's not recurring money.
Not necessarily. It's, it's not necessarily true. Could be underestimated revenues or all sorts of.
Some of it is, some of it is.
Some.
It's not recurring money. It's money that's in a budget that didn't get spent. And we already spent that. We already, we didn't, it's not like we lowered all the budgets because that money didn't get spent.
Unless the kids leave after kindergarten, you're, you're now starting a budget process for the schools that's a hundred thousand dollars higher than what the town appropriated.
Yes, you are. That's why, that's why the town has to make this decision.
So therein goes your argument about using free cash.
Well, no, this is, but no, but this is, this is where, this is why the town needs to make this argument. This is a budget issue with consequences.
And this is why I said to you earlier, sometimes we have to use free cash for these things.
Exactly. And some of this was, was under, under value, we undervalued new growth, so you get more. So there you go. There's your recurring money, Mr. Hathaway. Okay?
Based on what I'm seeing, I'm not concerned about spending the hundred thousand dollars in free cash. 'Cause I, I think we're gonna have a reasonably decent year in terms of what we certify next year as well. But I, I do feel strongly about the capital issue. I just, I understand your point and, but I, I just, I know that list needs to be reviewed. And I just, I, we don't have the time. Our fault, guilty as charged. We don't have the time to do that. If, if, I'm the liaison to the Norfolk schools. I, I will talk with the superintendent, I'll talk with the building inspector, and if that is, if you're agreeable, if that's a critical item, we put it on the list. But I would like to defer the other capital items to due process for the capital outlay committee for the spring fall meeting. That would be my request.
Now, just devil's advocate. If the capital outlay committee was to tell us tomorrow that they could review all the items before the fall time.
They couldn't get a list tomorrow, Scott, if they wanted to.
Yeah, because Jack says there's not, nothing's going on. I'm just confused if this list is gonna grow, it's not gonna grow. We, we're saying we don't know.
I probably need a week with the department heads to put together.
No, I'm not, I don't think it's, I'm just, again, if the list didn't change, I'd be, I'd be, I guess it'd be good and bad. I'd be kinda disappointed if this doesn't change because then we could've been reviewing it. All I'm saying is, right? You said not much is gonna go on there. I don't.
If, if there's something that, that is critical, operationally critical, that is a different category. The capital list, you know, in, in, in some respects, I would always view a, a capital list as critical in terms of the ongoing operational considerations of the town. But critical to me, immediate need between now and May doesn't fit the definition of, of buying a truck or, you know, I mean, unless we just don't have it. We have it. It's old, eight hundred and some, whatever, I'm being facetious, but, you know. I just, I, I think we owe the process the right amount of time and the right consideration. And we will have a better feel. We, we have an unknown on our prison mitigation money for November. We don't know whether we'll get it or not. We're hopeful. We're always hopeful, you know, but we may or may not get it. We'll have a better understanding of, if we do get it, which will be after November's nineteenth, we might have a bucket as large as a half a million of capital available just through prison mitigation money. And it presents a whole different thought and consideration process to how we weigh and prioritize these. And I, I'm not in any way demeaning the critical nature or the appropriateness of these requests. That's not my point. But I think if you were to sit down with the department heads, that, that list would get refreshed. And I just think that process needs to take place. And, and I don't think it needs to take place in a hurry unless it's critical. And there's no guarantee, by the way, if we ask these folks to get together that they could.
No, I'm just, I'm just that way.
I mean, everybody's life is very, very busy.
I don't see it changing that much. We've had the same cars, lawn mowers, paint this building, to, you know, do we do a new generator? Do we do that rubber roof down at the police station?
You talked about investing in, in core components. One of the things that, that we need to spend more money on is the maintenance of our facilities. And we've been holding back on some of that stuff. And I would, we need to give a thorough review of what's broken.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we have, I, I know, I think we have a good understanding of the needs, but I don't know that they've been thoroughly analyzed and prioritized because we just have been neglectful of, not neglectful, we haven't had the money to deal with it. And we got the police and fire station.
That's the biggest.
That's gotta get on the agenda. So, I mean, there's a whole lot of things that all get pushed together.
Well, I get that. I just don't think it's gonna change much, but okay. We'll go, well, we, the updated.
Maybe right.
We made them do ones and twos already, right? They prioritized everything they'd wanted. Again, I don't know the new stuff and I'm not trying to rush the capital out of the committee because we've put them together and we don't do anything anyway. So, I mean, bless their hearts that they continue to look at this stuff for us. So, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I just don't, you know, I'm just.
So what's your opinion?
Not, not gonna see much change there. But I mean, you know.
Well, tell you, we're gonna.
We'll know how much money we have. So we'll know more on the positive side of what kind of money we can, how much of that priority we can handle. So the priority's gonna be eight hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna be, I call it zone one absolute priority, besides blowing up water here. Zone one's like building maintenance, critical things to be fixed. That probably totals six hundred and twenty-two. You know, we don't even have that much already. So you just, you know, if you weighted them all, if there was done that way, you could.
So are, are you favoring trying to do capital in the fall or the spring?
Well, I think, I think what Scott's saying is there could be a, a pool of capital that is ripe for the fall. I would think the police chief, if you asked him tomorrow, he would say, we need, I need to transfer, get rid of some of these cars. Again, we need to, 'cause we did it before. We fell behind, you know, years ago, before you were on the board. We fell behind on the cars.
Fell behind while I was on the board. Don't feel bad.
Digging yourself out of a hole. I know Animal Control's been talking for a long time. So I know there are some, we're gonna have to have a capital piece on there anyway, even if we're just doing one thing for the.
So I guess I don't wanna rush you. Just throw more stuff on just to satisfy me, you were just saying.
It's on, let's think about, perhaps Jack will have an epiphany in the next couple of days and be able to come back at the twenty-second and say, holy smokes, this is what we gotta do.
Or we don't do anything other than what we have to do with the water heater. So we already know we have a capital.
Okay, so let me be, let me see if I can interpret that. What, what you're suggesting is, is that Jack come back to us with recommendations of what would be defined as cannot wait until May issues, of which we would say the water heater is probably one.
Might be none, yes.
And there might be no, we don't know.
Right.
But he, he would come back, not to exceed two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. He would come back and make a recommend, that's what we know we have in capital funds.
That's a rather arbitrary number.
One thing I do not favor is I do not favor spending a dime of free cash in November on capital.
Okay.
I, I will be more than happy to consider that in May, but not in November. We, we have, we are too early in the process of understanding what our budget is yet. I mean, I remember a selectman from another town in a meeting bragging about the fact that he had his following fiscal year budget finished in July. You remember that? That's how he solved his problem? And I'm thinking, you just created an enormous problem, which, by the way, he ended up doing. We, we don't know yet. We, we don't have any mid-season forecasts on where we are with all this yet. Right?
The, um, the warrant that we were dealing with had that artifact warrant, had that bit about the stable, transfer to stabilization. Remember it had the half a million, ooh, what's that? Now, that's still in there because we do owe stabilization ninety-seven thousand dollars. We, there's a big fat IOU sitting in there. I would like to put that money back in the fall.
I would agree with that.
Good.
The article's there, yeah.
The article that we put on and yelled at and then said, oh, good thing, good thing you put that on.
Good thing we kept that on. So the, so the, end result is, yes, I think Jack will have a can't really wait and don't make it too big, Jack. And will make the advisory board very cross with us and actually have a fall town meeting. And the warrant is closed, so no smart alec ideas to come. Is that acceptable? Is that a member?
Yep.
Follow me.
Okay.
The one, and I'm not trying to, I'm looking like the, the bad guy tonight, but the one thing that we don't have on the warrant is that economic article that you brought up earlier tonight, our solution to the apartment.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we don't, we, there's apparently, we're, we're not doing it.
Okay.
I haven't heard from ZBSC that they wanna do it.
Or planning board or anybody else.
Or planning board, or does the board of selectmen decide that we wanna change that rule?
No.
Okay.
Has Bill Rail called you?
No, no.
He's called me. I haven't returned his call. Uh, can we move on? Okay.
Yes.
Our wounds bandaged.
They weren't wounds, they were good debates.
All right, we have on here, please vote a name for Gumps Park. I noticed we have construction going, which is very exciting.
Yeah, we gotta build that sign some point, so we gotta know what to put on the sign.
So we had talked about earlier having some sort of contest or involving the community in some way, shape or form. Do we not want to do that? Do we wanna just pick a name right now? Is that the, I don't know who put this article on the agenda.
I did.
Okay.
Because Cindy asked us to make a decision tonight. She sent me an email and asked, would you please make a decision tonight and let Kurt know or Kyle know tomorrow what the decision is?
Not that I would, you wanna put it off, 'cause I wanna.
I, I will offer a suggestion, a point of discussion. I, I would say we call it Norfolk Community Park at either Rockwood Road or Gumps. And the reason this, and this, the reason I suggest that is that it, I think it creates the opportunity for us to name all of the acquisitions Norfolk Community Park at whatever, Highland Lake.
Right, and it's been at.
At whatever, you know, Fruit Street, or, you know, Jane and Paul's Farm, or, you know, Rob Garrity's old home, or whatever it might be. It gives us, it gives them uniformity to the process. 'Cause one of the things I'd like to see is get at at some point is, is putting a group together that will identify the resources we have in this community and make it available to people. I mean, we, we should have a trail map and opportunities for people to know what we have.
We bring an Eagle Scout to do that. They always come to rec and ask, yeah, they're wonderful. I started, 'cause I have a trail map and make up a nice PowerPoint, you know, a whole plot, you know, then we could print, like you said, all the different trails, all the different community parks.
But that, Norfolk Community Park is the, the, sort of the core naming component. And then add on to that the location and I don't have a bias that whether it's Gumps or Rockwood Road or whatever.
I like the location idea, 'cause it gives you the location.
And it could become more uniform. And we could name all of our properties similar to that.
As in a butter, I believe you do, you have no conflict on this issue, so you can fully participate in this.
As long as you don't suggest Budby Farms.
I don't, I like the Rockwood, I, 'cause the opposite was, yes, is it appropriate, not appropriate? At least at Rockwood Road, that's where it's okay. And it gives, you know, like I said, takes in that emotion out of the, you know, out of the.
Okay by me.
That's fine by me.
Good, I like that one, too.
I will move to name the project Norfolk Community Park at Rockwood Road.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose no, the ayes have it.
Cindy, go to sign.
Okay. That was too easy.
It's a good idea. No, I like the name. I just, if you like something, you like something. I just like, like you said, we have Highland Lake, we have Town Pond, I don't know if I call it Town Pond, if, Norfolk Community Park is Town Pond.
Norfolk Community Park at Town Pond.
I'm sorry, I've been down there, it's not very big, so, you know, we're trying.
I, I'm not laughing, I just, it's catching.
Nothing with you, Scott, really.
And, and incidentally, it's named after a veteran that way, so.
I was just looking it up.
There you go.
Like that, too. That's even better.
So we also have on this list, please vote for an associate.
At Rockwood Road or on Rockwood Road?
At, right?
I would say at, yeah.
Someone just got an update. Sorry.
It's got nothing to do with the Red Sox.
Oh.
Tigers.
You getting texts in disagreement of our name?
That's all right.
DB Rockwood.
Okay.
So please vote an associate member of the planning board candidates are Greg Merlis and Andrea Langhauser. I did not reach the chairman of the planning board this afternoon.
Have they voted?
No, they haven't.
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, my inclination is to follow their lead.
It's their associate. I'm with you, Rob. If they don't wanna, if, you know, whatever.
What do you mean, if they don't wanna vote or?
Well, they just haven't. I, I.
They need our votes, so why wouldn't we just go and get them, right?
Well, but it's their associate. I mean, you know.
Are you saying we don't, our votes don't count? I guess I don't, I mean, I'm fine with that, too.
They do count, but there's four votes there.
Right.
So if the four of them want someone, our votes are somewhat irrelevant.
It was five, right?
I'm sorry, just five.
Yeah, you, you were thinking of replacing.
I don't wanna hold them up, like say it was split or something like that and we, we make the difference, right? I mean, if it comes down to.
Well, that may be the case. It may be varying views.
See, they could be, they could be a four to one bore decision.
Right.
And then we vote the other.
If we voted the other way, it's a non-vote.
It's four to four and we, you know, and they're the ones who have to really frankly deal with the associate member.
I'm all for like boards picking on people. So you're saying, I mean, I, I think that's, you know, that, that doesn't bother me. I just, I just wanna keep, you know, I know the candidates are waiting, other people, associates are frustrated. When I watch the planning board meetings, they're totally frustrated. They keep saying it's our fault. Like, selectmen never do this, never get done, never get done. I, 'cause, you know, you watch the planning board meetings, too, right? Right?
It's, it's not us.
I know. Well, we have to vote, they have to vote.
They wanna hold interviews. They wanna interview the two candidates.
I thought they got off that.
So when are they gonna do it?
They keep putting it on their agenda and then they don't do it. But they're blaming us because.
Right, I watch it.
They're blaming us?
Yeah, yeah.
They keep saying we're dragging up.
Yeah, I see that on the planning board tapes.
Not voting.
Yeah. I watch that. You've seen that planning board meeting. I've seen that every planning board meeting.
That's what I said at one of the meetings.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm missing this. They, they wanna do interviews, but they're blaming us for not voting when they haven't held the interviews.
So we'll be like the, you know, we'll be like those states at the political conventions, you know, right before the number reaches the top and everyone passes. So.
I just wanna help, I just wanna help these two people out in the planning board. So I don't wanna be the, I just don't wanna be the one that's holding the process, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
I don't think we are holding up the process.
That's not what I hear. I watch, at least from watching. Again, this is an old meeting. I haven't watched the recent meeting.
Well, why, may I just make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Why don't we just tell the planning board that we're perfectly ready to vote our opinion on the associate member once they hold their interviews and have cast their votes?
Sounds good to me. Sounds good to me. And the final item on our action items are the town administrator's year-end review. You're waiting for stuff from me.
There's only one member of this board that has not submitted their review yet.
That would be me.
We're not the name names, we're finger pointing, we're collective board.
I will have it by the end of this week.
Okay.
I'd like to sit down with the town administrator.
He'd like to pay his college bills, tuition bills, so I'd sit down with him quick.
Marion, against chairman's wishes, went up the stairs and got the information on the.
Registrars?
Registrars. She did it under my. Mary Ellen was from June 2010 to 2013. Jerry was also June 2010 to June 2013. David Rosenberg is replacing Jack McFeely. He was recently appointed this past spring until June 2014. So, I would think you would wanna appoint one to expire in '15 and one to expire in '16, if you wanted to proceed.
Right. So, you've got. So, you want up in '14.
And you want one to expire in '15 and one in '16?
I would think so, I wouldn't, why wouldn't you want one every year?
I would, would make sense. Why don't we, where you had a reluctant but willing member do that with the '15?
Yeah.
And do the other with the '16? That'd be agreeable?
And he can always quit. If he really is reluctant.
Do you wanna give me those forms back? I can cross it off, can I?
You can, absolutely. Oh, sorry, these are the old ones.
I only have to cross one.
You do.
All right, so we need a motion.
I move to appoint Jerry St. Ammon as the Republican Member, Board of Registrars, term to expire June 30th, 2015.
I'm going to sit out this vote.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's your job.
I know, you appointed, but you said it all, Rob Gacy, I couldn't even get my mouth over it, and I talked a lot, you gave me, Rob, you see how fast he was? I got it.
You're gonna have some fun, huh? With your chair. You have two motorcycles on either side.
I move to appoint Mary Ellen Horgan Courier as the Democratic Member of the Board of Registrars, term to expire June 30th, 2016.
Oh, the motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no, the ayes have it?
That's your way to.
Yeah, that's you.
It's our Norfolk's version of the law firm, for the record.
Yes.
Ben Jarvis Greenhouse.
Ben Jarvis Greenhouse.
Oh, oh, yeah, I get you, okay, yeah, sorry. I say Coleman Pay, I don't know why I get the man's side, I don't know why.
We did receive a letter from the Conservation Commission. I don't know if you wanna discuss tonight, or.
Well, it's not on our agenda.
It come in after the 48-hour posting rule.
It is, I think we can put it on the agenda for the 22nd.
Just as a conversation, I've talked at length with the Conservation Commission Chairman about this to understand the issue and I think if he individually might wanna spend a few minutes on the phone with him, I, I think he'll have a good, good understanding of why he's made this request.
Yeah, in the old days, it would take an act of town meeting with the personnel board to do this, wouldn't it, Jack? Well, no, it's not really a new position, it's just ours.
Um, but he's, he's talking about create, moving it to a position rather than a.
It would be on the ranks, yeah.
Whatever, okay. So, how to, under the new contracts, how do you create a position?
We'd probably have to negotiate it with the, you know, I don't think it would be a tough negotiation, but we'd have to negotiate with the union, which they're coming in on the 22nd, so it's timely.
Can I ask a question? So, I, I get the idea, well, I don't, something, so right now, there's 10 hours per week and then 10, so the person's not gonna work any more hours a week, or are they? I guess I'm confused by that.
Yeah, you are, she, they are adding hours. The 10 hours are paid for by the Conservation Commission out of their fund.
Right.
And then.
10 by the fee.
The rest is paid by us, and they're asking us to assume an additional, I think it's 10 hours.
What do they, I guess, does that read that way, I didn't read, I don't know where.
They would put her, put 20 hours, which makes it a benefit-eligible employee.
20-hour-a-week employee.
Well, I get the 20 hours, but right now she's getting paid for 20 hours, just source of funds is different.
She has 20 hours with a compensation now, she's looking for 30.
Oh, it doesn't say, okay, this says 20, as a 20, though.
Well, plus, she's a, she's a contractual, so, all right, so she's a consultant, that.
I get that, but doesn't, no way in the world is it going to 30, it just says 20.
It's not 30 on our payroll. 10 of those hours are contractual through the fund.
Do that?
Paid directly by the Conservation Commission.
So, in essence, she's a town employee who has a side gig? The 20 hours as a town employee, and then the 10 hours.
She would have to be, she'd have to be in either an employee, she can't be an employee and a 10-hour.
So, she would have to be a 30-hour employee, and it just happens that the, the part of that funding is funded through, like, area review positions.
Mechanically, that's how it would work.
Yeah. So, it also creates a benefits issue.
Our out-of-pocket would be 20 hours.
An increase of 10.
No, I need to see the overall numbers, like, it's relative benefits, healthcare.
But it also includes benefits, so that.
But she would be eligible for benefits.
We don't wanna leave, I get the whole point, I'm talking to John.
I don't know whether she'd take them or not, but she would be eligible for benefits.
Pension and all that, too.
No, I know, no, but John lays out some pretty good stuff that we.
Add another 30% of cost.
In the fear of losing our.
But it would have to be a negotiated position, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah. Unless we're gonna try and exempt it, but.
But to be, no, that'd be, I don't know, well, I don't know if that. I don't know, I won't speak to it, I need to think it through a little more.
So, we should probably have conversations with the chairman of the Conservation Commission, and perhaps I would think we'd wanna have the ConCom in on the 22nd, some form of the ConCom. Whether the chairman wants to come in by himself, or.
You mean to discuss the request?
Yeah, to fully discuss the request.
Well, I think it would be helpful to have the chairman come in so that everyone can understand the need, rather than our just.
Yeah.
I would agree.
So, this is something they're looking for in the new fiscal year? Obviously, we need a budget, we need a budget for an additional 10 hours.
Right. Look, it says.
No, I think that just laying out the fact that there's a need, I'm not, I didn't talk to him about timing, but.
Yeah, I mean, this could be an issue for the FY '15 budget, or FY '14, so that's why we need to talk to him, partially.
My last bit of business was the town has a new look to its website.
Was that firstworkof Norfolk.org? I didn't come in today.
Wow, nice.
We got, we got.
It's up now?
Yep, we got virtual town hall to, you want me to put it up there?
No, I know, I didn't say, I hadn't, I didn't go to, no, you don't have to get turned, Jack, what am I? No, hey.
You got it, flaunt it.
I end up on the Red Sox game by mistake, it's purely.
It's 5-5-2. Just in case, I couldn't remember what channel that was on. I haven't got a score.
Is this Comcast or FiOS?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm a Comcast, I'm a FiOS guy.
This is Comcast, Xfinity.
8:31, if you're.
Troubling.
Oh, that's nice.
Only one, but when you buy the cheaper TV, it takes a little while to warm up. Oh, new version of.
World War Z.
We don't need to. Oh, we're doing a movie?
I think so.
Very good.
It's movie night. All right, so this is the new Norfolk website.
All right, so this is the homepage. All the pages were really just kind of migrated over, so this is the new homepage. And what we have, what we really wanted to focus on here is news and announcements. Obviously, we have some old, old severe storms and hurricane guides, and we're gonna put information out there. So, now tomorrow, that I know for sure, we're gonna have a fall town meeting, I'll.
Start telling people, yeah.
Put a little press release out there and say, fall town meeting is scheduled for, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Some of the other interesting things on, on this page, and, and I actually had a hard time finding it, even though it's the biggest thing on the screen practically, up in the upper left-hand corner is that town calendar. And that brings you to the my government, my town government webpage, which is a very useful page if people haven't used that. Shows all the upcoming meetings, you can actually subscribe.
Yeah, you subscribe, so you can send an email, that's all I get, that, right?
It's great, you can subscribe to a committee, and if you wanna know whenever they post, schedule a meeting, you'll get an email alert, you can do that there, so that's, that was very nice. But now on here, there's all the different pages for every different committee, every different department. See if I can find the Board of Selectmen.
It's there.
You just went departments.
You just went by, it's on the top, top, top.
Oh, yeah. It's under B, that's, that's, I'm not sure.
Where's that apartment photo? The nice car photo?
Oh, yeah, you know what, we lost your photo in the, in the transfer, we'll put it back out there, it's the one, one with the antique. Mr. Leehan's antique.
Yeah, it's awesome. Like, clean, like, nicer, updated.
One thing down the lower left on every page is that sign up for Blackboard Connect. I encourage people to, right now, we subscribe to a service that allows us to send out those emergency call, you know, traditionally they're called reverse 911 calls. But people can log on to this, follow this link and add their cell phones to that if they want, so that if.
So, you can get even more calls.
So, you can get even more calls. And I try very hard to limit those calls, they're, we seem, they come in spurts, so. You can also subscribe to, one thing we're gonna start using more often now is all the notices. If you, on the, go back to the homepage, this button down the right, it says subscribe to news. And you can sign up there and receive bulletins through email from the, either the town or from the recreation department, has their own link. So, they, they, when a new class gets added, they, they'll send out a blurb about that, and you can be alerted to that, very popular on our website, so. And we have some very professional-looking pictures up there on the top that I'm scrolling through.
Very nice.
I'm not sure who the wizard is that took those photos, but those are nice photos.
Is that you?
Well done, Marion. Oh, Jack, oh, okay.
So, I think it looks great.
That's a great picture.
Adam Steiner, our old director, started this process, and Michael Yang, our new IT director, finished it up. And I gotta just throw in my two bits for Michael, he's, he's doing an awesome job. All the department heads are, and all employees are loving his work. His customer service is top-notch, so he's doing a great job.
Excellent.
Looks very nice.
Thank you. I'm very happy with it.
So, does anybody have anything else? Before we adjourn for the evening? Mr. Leehan?
Uh, no, I don't believe I do.